ID's website as well. I'm going to go over some guidelines for tonight's forum. And then just some ground rules. So. Candidates are allowed in at their designated time slots. The D five candidates will wait until eight o'clock, so it's just. E two and D three for right now, the seven o'clock time. Each candidate gets two minutes to answer a question. Would you prefer a 90 second or 30 second warning? 90, 30, I like 30.
Are you talking about the countdown?
Correct.
Yeah, that 30.
30, okay, thank you. And then after individual and general questions, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. We will end around 10 minutes before eight to give ourselves a break to prepare for the next round at eight o'clock. And. General ground rules, just everybody's here to learn something about you folks to help in this coming general election. And I trust that everyone will say their piece and will follow just appropriate social rules and guidelines. And I will share my screen so I can introduce you all properly. Where is my beautiful, there we go. Oops, no, that's not what I want. Beth, can you give me a thumbs up if you can see the presentation? No, thumbs down. Okay, let's try that again. That one. Beth, can you see it? Great. Oh, my gosh, this is a. Ta-da, all right, welcome to the October 21st, 2020 Special Education Candidate Forum for Howard County. Our host tonight are the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, or CCAC, where we service the county in advising the school system about students with disabilities. We connect with other community disability advocacy groups to help improve the lives and education of all of our students in Howard County. There are approximately 59,000 students and 10 to 11% of them have an IEP and another 10% of them have 504, so we're looking at a good 18 to 20% of our student population with special education needs. The other host tonight is the Howard County Autism Society. They are another advocacy group in the county who provides education and support to parents and families throughout the county. So tonight, everyone, I'd like to introduce our Board of Education candidate from District Two, Ms. Antonia Watts. And our District Three, Ms. Jolene Mosley. All right. So I'm going to dive into the first question. Ms. Watts and Ms. Mosley, this question is for the both of you, so you can just jump in with whoever wants to say it first. Over the last several weeks, Board of Education candidates have aligned themselves with a political party against the Howard County Board of Education Policy and Election Regulations. Disabilities do not discriminate by race, gender, age, or political party. How can you assure community members that you will understand and advocate for adherence to special education regulations regardless of party affiliation?
So I can't see Jolene anymore, but I can start others. Um, so for me, one of the things I've I've done is I have once, as soon as we went virtual, I started one-on-one community conversations. And those are open, those are open for anybody who wants a time slot, who wants to come and have a chat with me. I have not turned away community members from speaking to me. I have tried to answer any question that comes my way. And so that's my, that's what I plan to continue to do. I plan to continue to have these these times just set aside specifically for community members to voice their concerns with me one-on-one. And that will carry over for the special education population as well.
Ms. Watts, I just wanted to point out our CCAC Secretary Beth Stolti will be taking time, so she's up there. She'll be holding a red card when time is almost up.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, Ms. Mosley, would you like to respond?
Hello. Since my campaign started, I have also had opportunities to meet with community members. But I've also reached out and met with some groups that I did not know a lot of information about them because I felt like my knowledge base needed to grow more so that I can build that relationship with that community. And one of the examples that is related to the special education community is I was really excited to attend a presentation from Decoding Dyslexia Group. I learned a lot of information there and it was really useful for me and also for, you know, things that I've encountered in my own life. It was nice to learn about some things. And I would continue to do that. I think it's really important. I've met, I've been a community advocate for a long time with various groups. The school system is very important to me and the health of the school system is what is my goal.
Thank you. So this next set of questions are just general questions. The topic is return to school. Accessibility of the curriculum during virtual learning is extremely challenging for many in the special education community, especially those with younger children or those with more significant needs. Parents are already seeing regression and their children are falling further behind their peers. What is your action plan for bringing these students back into the classroom?
I can go first, Antonia, since you went first for the last one. A couple of things. In my personal life, I have encountered some of this difficulty with virtual learning. I have four students. My oldest is a senior in high school and my youngest is a preschooler in the rec program. My, so I get in ones in middle school, so I get a full range of, you know, different ways that students are interacting with virtual learning, right? And I can see how wonderfully my youngest son's teacher is trying to, you know, make relationships and work with students that really could really benefit from being one-on-one with her. And even my four-year-old has a hard time using the technology. I think these groups where the students are regressing, not only in their education, but as well as the therapies and services that they are provided are lacking because they're not able to do them virtually. It's really important to put prioritization to those groups to be in person when they are have when their providers and when their teachers and educators are able to safely do so. Because with those communities, we're seeing not just regression in their education, we're seeing regression in skills that they've learned and other things like that that will be a lot difficult to catch up on as time goes on with the distance.
So if I, if I understand the question correctly, it is accessing the curriculum and then how to get students back into the building?
Correct.
Okay, so I hear what I hear what Julian is saying, like the teachers are, this is a huge lift to try to deliver this content in the virtual setting, especially for the youngest guys. I have a three-year-old and a and a six-year-old, and we actually opted the three-year-old out of rec this year, which kind of broke my heart because we just knew that he just wouldn't be able to do it. He's wiggly. But my, my six-year-old is having a positive experience. And so I would like to see small groups returning to the building that need those services. Students with disabilities, our youngest learners, right, we're talking pre-K to maybe second grade. And then the students with disability, students with dysplasm and free and reduced lunch. And in order to be able to get students and staff back into the building safely, I'd like to see staff ensure that they have the proper PPE that that their classrooms are maintained in a way that we can have either windows open or some type of filtration system within the room for the classrooms that are windowless and even for the winter. And then I'd like to see, make sure that the students are provided with proper proper face mask and that they have access to them and they're, they're accessible to our students that may not be able to afford them. And so I, and I want to make sure that there are policies in place that are protective both for the staff and for the students. And I can say that at the elementary school level, teachers just don't have time for certain things and sometimes that falls to students. And I can see a situation whereby some of the cleaning would fall to our students, right? I've done it before as a teacher where maybe I spray the desk and they would wipe it. So I want to make sure that we have actual policies in place that address some of the concerns that parents may have about proper cleaning, proper sanitation of the classroom and the building.
The next question are is there are students with disabilities who also do not speak English and are really struggling with virtual learning. The superintendent states that they are working on plans while other systems are bringing other counties are bringing some students back. What would you do to ensure that these students who are able to comply with masks and distancing protocols do not also fall behind? This is related to number one, but specifically for those who do not speak English or English language learners.
So I'd like to see, small group reading just started, maybe last week. I would have liked to have seen that actually start virtually earlier to try to catch some of these, these gaps that are forming for our, our English as a Second Language students. And I guess this relates back maybe to a little bit to the previous question that I'd like to see them brought in in small groups, right? They are a priority and, and need a, a focused effort to make sure that their, their language needs and their, their academic needs are being met. So I'd like to see services that are one-on-one in person and small group in person for that, for that population.
Um, I agree with a lot of what Antonia is saying. I'd also like to add that we have seen the models that are recently working, they're working with these English language learner students improving their graduation rates and improving their reading test scores in the past couple of years. So we know what kind of models work and those models are small groups. And it's very important to continue to have the teachers and the educators and the families and the students regular communication when things are working or are not working so that we can alter what we're doing. And the virtual setting is very difficult for that sort of conversation to happen. So maybe even having community groups have specific meetings and to get them and get them involved in what, talking about what's working and what's not working so that we can make a really robust plan to get them together in the school in a small group so that they can work on their learning.
Great, thank you. Ms. Mosley, you can answer this next question first. I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint and share with you a graph. Beth, can you thumbs up if you see the word staffing? Thanks. All right. So Ms. Mosley, this graph shows us from 2017, the number of additional special education teachers in yellow over the past five year, four years. Compare that with the number of the green bars, the number of additional students with disabilities over previous years. Looking at these numbers and the discrepancy, the differences between the yellow and the green bar graphs, the number of special education students has increased by 1,006 from fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 13. So between that five-year period, the number has increased over 1,000. But the number of special education teachers has only increased by 2.5 positions. Also, students with disabilities are four times more likely to be given out-of-school suspensions than their non-disabled peers. What role do these limited positions play in the district's ability to provide quality special education services for these students? And how could you improve them given limited funds?
Can I verify what you're asking? You're showing me a graph from 17 to 2020 because 2021, we don't have our enrollment yet, right?
Yes, those are predictions, I believe.
Well, those are eight, but we know what we hired, but we don't know what our student population.
We don't know the student.
And then the statistics you gave me with 1,006% are not totally capsulated in this graph, but it's from 13 to 18 with 1,006,006% increase in student receiving special education services. And over that time, only two and a half positions were added. I just want to make sure I have that right.
I'm sorry, um, number, the number was 1,006, not a percent.
Okay.
Yeah, it increased by 1,006 individual students. Sorry about that.
All right, all right, I wasn't sure. I thought I heard percent. That's a lot of information in one question, and I think the bottom line is, is that is a lot of students and that's not a lot of adults to be participating in their education. And it's leading to more disciplinary, disciplinary actions because the students are four times more likely to receive these disciplinary actions with suspensions and things like that. I think this is proving how we need to change the culture of our school systems and of our schools so that our students, our families and our educators feel like they are valued and that they are included and that they are welcome at the school, right? We had to get down to the root issues on why the investment isn't happening in the value of a person, right? Some other things that I see happening is that we are not investing in educating our teachers and our parent educators in understanding disabilities and diagnosis and how to respond when they need to respond to a child who might not be having the best day or the best moment or things like that and ends up being removed from this, from the classroom. We also know that special education students do well, better if they are in an inclusion classroom for around 80% of their time in school. If they're having disciplinary actions because educators and parents are not having the tools to respond to these things and pull them back in, then we are in this vicious cycle. And those types of things need to be addressed with more training and not just check marking off that we've done training, that we're actually doing training and that it is valued and we are investing in the people that take care of our children.
Thank you. Ms. Watts, do you have anything to add for this?
I think Jolene has covered a lot of it. And I think one of the most, because you know, you stated that the lack of funding, the funding may not be there to do the things that we need and want to do in, in special education. And so because like, I don't know, maybe 80, 85% or so of special education students are in the general education classroom, it's going to fall to general educators to kind of close this gap. It's going to be the training that Jolene spoke of to ensure that the general educators understand how to handle behavior. I know that from my experience as a teacher, I was, I was taught how to how to use, how to manage a classroom, right, but not necessarily how to manage individual behavior and individual behavior as it relates to special education students. And so I think if, if that training exists, then, then going forward, it'd feel a little bit easier to kind of get those numbers down. Because you know, that we don't want our special education students disproportionately impacted by discipline. And also I'll say that I was a general education teacher in the secondary level. And at the secondary level, that doesn't, this kind of training really doesn't exist as much because, you know, it's just not as focused, it's just not there. I think they kind of maybe assume that we've got it at some point or just kind of falls off. So I'd like to see that training also happen at the secondary level because that's, that's a, a group that's often overlooked and still deals with a lot of the, the discipline and the behavior issues from this, from the classroom.
All right, this next graph also talks about staffing. Again, another big question, I apologize, but inquiry minds want to know, so. Howard County is the second bar. The gray line shows us special education enrollment versus the number of special education teachers and aides. And as you can notice, Howard County is one, if not the only county that has a lower, the, the percentage of special education enrollment does not match the number of special education teachers. Therefore, according to the Department of Education, Howard County has a significantly higher number of special education aides compared to special education teachers than other surrounding counties. A common concern that we hear from parents is that their children are placed with untrained aides rather than direct contact instruction with a certified teacher. Given budget constraints, how would you work to correct these concerns? And I know, Ms. Watts, you might, you mentioned a little bit of it in your last answer. Could you clarify that a little more for us looking at this graph?
Sure, this is, I don't know what a good word for it is, it's unfortunate. Their aides are aides are just that, they're, they're aides, they're, they're there to be of, of help, they're not there to do the, the work of the teacher. And so I think that I spoke to it, if we're still talking about funding and budget being a concern and especially going forward, it's going to have to fall, it's going to have to fall back to some of the responsibilities of the general education teacher. Because I don't know how to, I don't know how to write these numbers without the funding. And so I think, like I, like I said, I've, I think that this goes back to, to training. This has obviously been a funding issue that it continues to perpetuate itself going forward. And so I think the, the only way to, to write this is when we do have the, when we do have the funds that we make sure we spend them on the teachers and not aides. And so I think that's, that's the first step is that we, you know, we, we redirect our funding to hire more teachers and less, and less bodies. I mean, people want, people want teachers that are trained in dealing specifically with this with the needs of our children as opposed to someone who is just not equipped. And honestly, it's unfair to the, to the aide to be given this responsibility and this task and being expected to effectively manage it.
Thank you. Ms. Mosley, have anything to share?
Yes, um, one of the things that I thought about when Antonia was talking with we're going to be hiring new teachers and new educators because of turnover, because of various reasons, enrollment increases, things like that. And I know that we are targeting to include more diversity in our workforce. I think another target perhaps can be teachers that are general education teachers that are also educated in special education and prioritize those hires and work on keeping them in our school system. So that way, more of our general education teachers, if that's the role that they are taking, are also special education teachers or vice versa. Just adding that into our hiring process as a priority.
Great, thank you. These next few questions talk about reading and the achievement gap within. Thank you for indulging us with with these graphs. I know with your backgrounds of being an engineer and with economics, you deal with numbers all the time, so. Thank you for being open to looking at these numbers on a fly. I know it's, it can be really difficult, but you ladies look like you've got it, a hang of it. So. This is the number of percentage students proficient in English Language Arts 2019. Special education is the bar in red. And as you can see, if this were stretched further to 100%, majority of our general education grade levels hover around 50 and 60%. So we know that specific reading instruction ends in the second grade. Yet nearly 50 to 60% of all of our students are not meeting third-grade level expectations on a standardized test called the MCAP, M-C-A-P, meaning that students may not be able to access their education in later years and will continue to fall behind expectations. What do you propose and how do you plan to implement strategies to help students after the third grade? How about we start with Ms. Mosley?
Yeah, I don't mind the graphs at all. I'm a data scientist. I do work with different types of data than this, but I can, I can, I got you what you're saying. It's a little cut off by the, by the Zoom though, so I will admit that. Um, one thing that I was very thankful for, like I mentioned before, was the Decoding Dyslexia Group met with me and we talked about some strategies to help with this. And one of the things that they are talking about is structured literacy and how that can help our readers learn how to read in a, in a way that is better for more students. Not just for students that have dyslexia or or other issues that might be causing them to have a hard time learning to read, but also general education students. And they have a really good group that's working to meet state and federally requirements to make systematic changes and you know, to do all of these things that will be a better program for our, for our readers. My children have been in the Howard County School System for 14 years now. My oldest child is a cancer survivor. And before she came into school, she was reading at a very basic level and she was being able to write some of her words, simple things. She had 26 months of chemotherapy and coming out of that, she regressed all the way down to only being able to identify 11, 11 letters of the alphabet. Um, and seeing the way that she was provided support and learning how to read. I think it was more of a structured literacy program than it was what I see with my future children coming through the school system where it was more sight words and things like that. So I can see the benefits of using these different system for our students.
Um, so I mean, I'm also met with Decoding Dyslexia and it's, it's almost mind-boggling, these, these statistics. I will say you asked about after third grade. From an educator's perspective, after third grade, I taught secondary, secondary education, so seventh to 12th grade. And one of my pre-teaching assignments in high school, when I was teaching high school, was to give your children a literacy assignment and teach them how to read math, right? And it was one of the hardest, it was one of the hardest things I've ever done and because we had actually no formal training on how to help our students learn how to read, let alone read math. And so that, that's what they were trying to get us to understand is that you're asking students, especially as they get to the higher levels, you're asking them to access information that is, is written at a higher level, the concepts are written at a higher level. You're asking them to access this information and they're not coming to you with the necessary reading skills and it's holding our students back from, from their full academic potential, right? You can't get, you can't get super far in math if you are struggling to read word problems, if you're struggling to figure out. You can't get there, you can't get super far in math if you are struggling to read word problems, if you're struggling to figure out information. And so I would love to see the secondary educators be given training in literacy. And in it, because again, the formal literacy stops at after second grade, but there unfortunately, not every every child has the tools that they need in place by second grade. And so I think it's it's it would be great for our educators to know how to kind of fill those gaps. And also the educators that are at the higher level, because they're still kids and you're, like you said, your graph cuts off at 10th grade. But you'll still see students that are 11th and 12th grade and we're preparing to send them out into the world as adults. And they lack the sufficient, they're not proficient in reading. And so I love to see the general educators being able to teach literacy and also teach literacy in their content areas.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask another reading question, and I'm very glad both of you had a chance to talk to Decoding Dyslexia. That's another great reading advocacy group. So, reading outcomes for children of disabilities are far below their peers, peers, I'm sorry, peers, as indicated by the graph. The Board of Education often discusses this achievement gap without addressing the fundamentals of reading that are at the core of these outcomes for a large group of students. How would you change that at a board level? Ms. Watts, go for it.
So when I was talking to Decoding Dyslexia, I was telling them about a time that I was driving to the zoo. And there was this billboard that said something to the effect of if you can't read proficiently by fourth grade, your the rate of you going to jail or prison actually increases substantially, so that those two things are connected. And so I think that's that's that's, you know, we're talking about this prison, this the school to prison pipeline. And I think that that adequately preparing our students to read is part of that, right? Like if we're, if we are if we're looking at students that are lacking in reading abilities, that definitely severely limits where they're going to go. And then as, so that that's just general education, right? And then also in special education, we see that just exponentially more. And so I think when we're at the at the board level, we're looking at policies, we're going to start talking about policies that are going to impact reading. So the curriculum that we choose has to be centered around right, structured literacy, like Julian said, right? I I tried to teach my own son how to read and we were trying to do whole words and I realized I wasn't getting anywhere quickly. And so we started with letter sounds and now my three-year-old actually only knows his letter sounds and he's less able to identify the actual letter yet, right? So we're, we took a whole different approach based on just what we saw in our own family. And so I think that needs to happen at the board level is we we have the data, we have what's happening here. We see that our students are not proficient proficient in ELA and we have to do something different. And that includes the curriculums that we're that we're selecting.
Thank you.
Um, I want to echo a little bit on the policy that Antonia was talking about, working on policy at the board level. Recently, they they passed Policy 1080, which is the equity policy. And wrapped up in that include so many important things with impacts to gaps and to students who are receiving special education services and have disabilities. And it, you know, it's a, it's a policy where we can put our conversations in our words and our funding towards reaching the goals that we need to reach for our students. Learning outcomes are really important and funding the curriculum that we need, educators that we need, workable training that we need is going to be the discussions that need to happen at the board level so that our policies are solid and they are implemented in a solid way, because the intention with the equity policy is there, right? That's where this conversation happens. But we need to make sure that that implementation and that process of making sure it happens is what we're discussing and following up on.
Thank you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and just look at all your lovely faces and talk about equity. So, Ms. Mosley will take this question first. We know that students with disabilities have been excluded in many recent equity policy drafts. Meaning that often special education advocacy groups have had to fight to get a seat at the table. Specifically, Policy 1080, Education Equity, and 9020 Rights and Responsibilities, just to name a couple. What do you see as the board's role in ensuring equity to include the special education population?
Sorry, sometimes it's hard to find that unmute button. When I'm looking at the policy and I see the revisions that are happening and I'm watching them as they come out. Through the years, I've always tried to keep an eye on who are who are include, what what HCPSS stakeholder groups are included in the ask for who's going to be on the policy. And you do notice some things that, especially if you are working with a group or are an advocate for a group, when your group is left out, it's really crushing and you feel like you're almost not important to the school system and you're not valued. And that's absolutely not true. And we need to listen when someone says, this is my truth and you're not including me and my words are important. And make sure that the HCPSS stakeholder groups are solid and do represent the communities of our students and the communities that represent our students and the experience that comes from those communities. Because how are we ever going to learn about what is needed for the different groups, especially the special education community, when their voice isn't at the table? So as a Board of Ed member, we're going to continue to monitor these stakeholder groups and make sure that not only is the invitation given out, that we make sure that that seat on that policy group for that HCPSS stakeholder group is filled and has a backup, so that when people need the flexibility, someone can be there from that group to voice their experience.
Thank you.
So I think Julian has covered one aspect of it really well, just kind of that's that idea, that seat at the table. And I just want to speak to it in kind of a different, a different manner. I think that when people hear equity, they make the assumption that it only is black, brown, and poor. And that's unfortunate, because I think that's how special education gets left out of the conversation. Because the way that we have framed it, the way that it's been talked about, those are, those are the groups, right? Black, brown, and poor, that's what people keep thinking when they hear educational equity. And when in fact, that's, that's not, that's not at all everybody that includes, in fact, equity is for everybody. And I think that that is, that's one of our, that's one of the things that we have to go we have to do going forward is make sure that we always extend the conversation and we we keep adding and bringing people in, right? So like Julian's talking about giving you a seat, giving people a seat at the table, bringing them into the conversation and letting them know that this is how educational equity is going to be impactful for these groups and and can be impactful for you as well. So I think that's kind of the 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 second piece of the puzzle of of discuss, the discussion around educational equity.
Thank you. These next two questions talk about accountability. And we will hear from Ms. Watts first. So, one concern we have as advocates, we continue to have is the seeming inconsistency across schools regarding staffing support for special education community. What ideas, specific ideas might you have, or what types of approaches might you take to work to ensure that schools across the county have high quality and sufficiently trained staff to meet the needs of the student population?
I think we've talked about staff a fair amount. So kind of that's the, some of the things I've mentioned about hiring, training, but especially general education teachers. But one of the things I'd like to see to kind of, if you will, level the playing field between schools is I've seen some places have what's like a special education strategic plan. And so that we have a general strategic plan for the county, but I'd love to see one that is just focused on the special education community and one that has thereby has measurable goals and which we could say, like, are we actually doing these things? Are we actually reaching towards this, reaching towards these goals that we have, are we achieving them? And so then that that gives us the ability to look at all schools and measure the, measure what's happening in the buildings, because it's 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 when we talk about what's happening in one school versus the other, it usually doesn't fall in the category of being backed by data. It's usually parental experiences. And so I love to, and it's hard to have a conversation that's that's not, it's not as quantitative. So I'd love to see some some data added to that where we can actually measure how schools are doing and then have the training in place that really shores up then what's happening in one school that's not happening in another.
Antonia, there is a special education strategic plan?
Thank you. And see, I guess this is part of the problem, right? Like it exists, but it doesn't exist in which, a way that's accessible to people, right? Unless you're in the right space, that's not what you hear.
Right, yeah, it's on their, it's on the website. And um, one thing that I've been watching with it, it's from 17 to 2020. And it's very aggregated to the school level and it's pretty specific to some like efforts in ELA and math and things like that. But one of the things it doesn't break out on is it doesn't break out on individual schools. So while the county might show accountability at the aggregate level of whatever aggregate they're providing the report on, they are not providing it at this individual school level. So we might see differences in like, for example, maybe a Title I school uses their Title I funding towards a specific need that is impacting, you know, full building. And we don't see that investment on that aggregated level reporting. And when we talk about data tracking, we talk about accountability, I'm really concerned when accountability turns into checkmarks. And it's not actually people aren't actually given the funding, the resources and the time to actually complete those steps of accountability. Like, you know, sometimes you are required to do 20 hours of service and, you know, the person will sign off at 18 hours. And it's just that I don't want to see that happening, because I think that diminishes all accountability across the board. So those are some of my thoughts on that.
Thank you. So along with that accountability, we believe that yes, if we have the right teachers in all the schools, that things are equitable, that the picture looks bright and dandy for everyone. But the statistics show some, a different story. This will be, I believe, looking at the time, this will be our last general question. And then you will have each two minutes to say some final words. So graduation rates. What do you believe can be done as a system to increase graduation rates for students with disabilities? We know in a CCAC board report to the Board of Ed in 2018, we reported that 2018 numbers revealed students across HCPSS graduated at a 92% rate. However, the graduation rate for students with disabilities falls at a 67.41%. What can be done to increase these graduation rates? And I believe that is, Ms. Mosley will start.
I can go first, yeah. Um, I also noticed that I track some of these things and I have for years. I really like to use the Office of Civil Rights data, you know, the education data that they provide. It can give a glimpse into these things. And one thing that I like to do is I like to look at the individual high schools and how, you know, zooming down a little bit and what's happening at the individual high schools. And are there some high schools that are doing better with their special education students and promoting them into graduation status? Or are there some that are struggling? And then talking to the administrators and the parents and the educators that work in those schools to see what are they doing different? How can we collaborate across schools to see what is actually working and what is supposed to work, but maybe not be implemented in a fashion that is being beneficial to the students, right? One of the things that I would really like to see is that that it's a priority that we get our students to the schools, to want to be at the schools. I own, I understand too that one of the groups that does have a higher chronic absenteeism is students with disabilities. And it's harder to graduate when you're not in the building having your classes. They're four times more likely to be in suspensions and excluded. And it's changes in those things, the investment in the child that can encourage them to be more likely to graduate. That's what I'd like to see.
Um, so Julian talked about the high school, I'll, I'll go all the way back down to the beginning. I think it's can start as as early as, like, I'm a big advocate of early childhood education, right? I, my, my oldest was in Iraq, it was a great experience for him, he learned to be an inclusive environment. But I think it starts, it starts there, it starts early, catching catching some of these these struggles early and intervening early. And and making sure that we right the ship early. It shouldn't be that we wait for our students to fail and then we give you something that that you can use. It should be, we should have, you know, strategies that are proven to work for young kids that are that are building. We talked about reading a lot, building their reading abilities, building their critical thinking and math, that we are actually looking at them when they are three, four, five, six years old. And we're, we're getting them on the right path, instead of taking them off of the graduation track when they are in third, fourth, fifth grade. So I just, I, I would like to see us work hard on the, on the front end and put in that hard work when they're itty bitty and get them on the right path for later on in life.
Thank you. And now for closing comments, let's start with Ms. Watts. What would you like to share with us?
First, I want to say that I, I view this role as a impetus for change, but also an an opportunity to learn. And I'm not above learning, right? Julian just told me something new and that was beneficial to me, right? And so I, we talked about this very, very early on, is these conversations with other groups and and maybe people that don't hold the same ideology as as you do. I'm here to, I'm here to advocate and through advocacy, the only way I can do that is by learning. And so I try to make sure I get my website, it's antoniawatts.com. And at the bottom, there's an opportunity to schedule a chat with me. Email is also helpful as a, as a way to contact me. And now for the campaign part, I guess. Early voting starts on Monday, early in-person voting starts on Monday. So I just encourage people to research your candidate and make sure that you're, you're making a good choice on behalf for your child and for your community. And I'm always, of course, looking for volunteers, if people have the time and the energy to volunteer next week, I'd love that. And I think that's about it. I don't know, Julian will probably think of something that I missed and she'll throw that in there too. But thank you for having me, this is, this has been great. And again, my name is Antonia Barkley Watts and make sure you vote.
I always share information, Antonia, I'm sorry, I'm an open person like that. If I learn something, I want to share it so that others can, you know. No, because if you don't know, you don't know, right? And I don't know everything and it's just how it is, right? So I appreciate when people tell me that I don't, and if I have like mayonnaise on my face, you know, because that's important to know. So one of the things that I did learn today is that the Howard County Autism Society donated the playground signs so that the children who use assisted so that the children who use assisted, um, non-verbal and communication devices cannot participate on the playground. And that made me really happy to see, um, one of the things that I do notice when I see playgrounds installed and I see buildings installed is how, um, things that, um, people who are needing different services are as a second thought. And that's really something that bothers me. Even like stairs in a building or like an elevator that you need to have a lock on, those, there's things that really bother me. So seeing that you guys added those signs to assist the students really made me happy because they should feel like they can communicate and participate as they can, right? So thank you for that. And, um, thank you for having me tonight. I hope through this conversation that I've encouraged you to vote for me. Antonia mentioned the early voting starting on Monday. And you can go to Board of Elections website for specific details for yourself. Um, my name's on the ballot. My opponent's name is also on the ballot. He has thrown his support behind me. So that is encouraging. My website is jolienmosley.com and I'm looking forward to working with the community and HCPSS to move us to a space where everyone is valid, included, and accepted. It's really important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. To our audience who is listening, thank you very much. We wanted to let you know that all candidates were invited. And we thank Ms. Jolene Mosley and Ms. Antonia Watts for joining us tonight. Thank you very much. And now we're going to take a short break for our eight o'clock forum. So, hang out if you want. But you may leave if you want to. Thank you.